Emina Bente Nueve, Benela Hesla Chan Guahan is called to order. I would like to recognize the Majority Leader, Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that the agenda dated December 22, 2008 be accepted.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered. I would like to ask Speaker Benn if he can lead us in prayer. In Chamorro.
Situs Masih, Fanoghi Fan Todu. Inanitata la hinay dan spiritu san tuomen. Dujstota man motuan pogu niunna posibli niunnoyam nilala. Para hami inilala unnoyam para na klosi para man setbi para itautau Guam itautau mulukui. Ingagago na unkontinua na ungiya yinasun momi ikurasun momi ikhanai momi. Dan todui tsetu momi para bensegui tai manu na hemplo unfaanuiyam anionnoyam. Gini, gima maimila, gidiya 25 gi Disembre. Ilaimu ni para ufa mokat guine gitano. Ja po noyam hemplo tai manu na kinaskas, tai manu na minagohit, dan tai manu na guinaidja. Para ta faanui todui itautau mu imani lun momi, ifamilia. Dan todui itautau ni mangagi guine gitano. Na tukati sinya impatsa fisikaat watu pogu. Lo gini ni tsetu momi yinasun momi ititi natsudun momi. Impapatsa todui itautau guine gitano. Ja iginagau momi pogu na oni para unbendisi ja unnoi ipas dan paskua para todos. Enau ingagago gini ni fina na gwemu ni hami todos. Situs Masih dan saina Masih. Inanitata la hinay dan spiritu san tuomen.
Nog i Chamorro, puri tanota. Kantai matu na nya itodu iluka. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i slasin para. Para i onra, para i gloria. Abiba i slasin para. Todui tempo ipas para hita. Dan gini ni la ngitna bendisho. Kontry peli gru na fan safulam. Dujst prote i slan guam. Kontry peli gru na fan safulam. Dujst prote i slan guam.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gay through, through the night, that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet sway? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo.
Here.
Senator Cruz.
Here.
Senator Espaldan.
Here.
Speaker Forbes. Senator Guthertz.
Oh, I did, I did.
Here.
Here.
Senator Shizaki. Senator Luhon. Senator Munia Barnes.
Hiya.
Speaker Panglinen. Senator Respecho. Senator Shimso.
Present.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampa. Madam Speaker, wish to report there is a call. Thank you. Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just briefly, Senator Palacios, Senator Shizaki, you're both here. Would it be all right if the record, moved if the record reflected they are in fact present?
But they're not, I know they saw them, I s-
Okay, then I withdraw that motion and move to excuse Speaker Forbes.
Okay, on that motion then, without objections, so ordered. Majority Leader, you're recognized with the rest of the business.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated December 11 to December 13, subject to corrections.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that any messages from Imacalai and Guahan be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion without objections, so ordered.
As well as reports of standing committees and reports of select committees. If there are any, I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that any bill introduced as of today be given its first reading. Any bills or resolutions or legislative certificates be given its first reading.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered. We are in motions.
Madam Speaker, I, we have about 40 bills that are ready to go on the Session Agenda. And a lot of these bills have been on the Agenda for quite some time and may be considered routine in nature. At this time, I move that Bill 248, Bill 270. Did you want the listing of the bills or did I just make one motion to put the bills on? And some of these are pending a committee report, but what we've done is that if the committee report is not available, we will just go to the next bill and come back in this order.
Can we make sure that everyone has a copy, the Session Agenda with the list of the bills and the titles, and at least?
Okay.
Does everyone have a copy? It says Session Agenda, December 22, 2008, and it's a list, listing of all the bills. Okay, so can we take a brief recess and make sure-
I can make other motions while they're making these copies available.
So Senator Respecho, you're recognized on another motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that all resolutions introduced, whether it's commendatory or congratulatory or condolence in nature, be given its first reading and be adopted. And that all senators be co-sponsored of those resolutions and that the legal council be authorized to make any technical amendments.
On that motion without objections, so ordered. Senator Respecho, you're recognized on another motion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the Governor's veto of Substitute Bill Number 33, creating the Comision Guam Fanen and the Guam First Commission on the Military Mission in Guam, I move that this be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, the motion is to place, notwithstanding the veto of the Governor to place, they all-
Well, with some discussion.
Okay, so you're going to place it in the third reading? I mean voting, no, 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 I'm sorry, not voting file yet.
Yeah, the motion is to place in the voting file and then I'll just discuss briefly.
Okay, so on the voting file, but you want to discuss it. Okay, so on that motion then, no objections. Yes, so he's going to discuss it. No, I didn't gavel it in.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll make this as quickly as possible in consideration of all the things that we have on the Agenda. But this will be my ninth attempt to try to get the Governor, the Legislature, the Mayors, a youth representative, members of the Governor's Administration that are closely responsible for preparing our island for the military buildup, to be on the same page at the same time and same place so that whenever we take a position, we always put Guam first. And the Governor has consistently said that he does not support a creation of a Guam First Commission because he believes that it would abolish the Civilian Military Task Force. If the Administration, Madam Speaker, only read the bill in its entirety, it does say that the Guam First Commission shall be the point commission in negotiations and dealings with the federal government or any entity for that matter with respect to the military buildup. But what this, what this bill would do if we override the Governor's veto, it would put into statute the Governor's own executive order which created the Civilian Military Task Force. We said that this buildup is beyond any one of us individually, beyond any one of us as a political party, or beyond any one of us as our current terms in the Administration or in the Legislature. The Governor's term is ending in two years. And if we have, when we have a new Governor, whoever that person may be, it just doesn't make sense to have a new Governor sign another executive order that would take us down a very different path from what we're trying to go down now. With all due respect to Governor Camacho and his Administration, I just can't seem to understand why he would feel offended to having a Guam First Commission where he is the chairman, where his Civilian Military Task Force is a technical arm to this group, where everything that they've been doing so far will not be changed midstream, as some have said, but actually be strengthened? Because now you're gonna, you're gonna bring in the Legislature and you're gonna compel the Legislature to do certain things policy-wise to prepare our island and that would be in concert with what the Guam First Commission wants to do. You'll also have our Mayors, who are the first line of defense, prepare our island. And you even have representatives from the Guam Economic Development Authority, from the Guam Visitors Bureau. You'd even have a Chief Justice who may appoint himself or appoint someone else. It just makes greater sense, Madam Speaker, that, given all the problems we've had so far in our dealings with the federal government, especially in light of Governor Camacho writing to Secretary Gates expressing frustration over lack of transparency and information and even calling upon the Joint Program Office to be a little bit more forthcoming. At the same time, the Governor expresses these concerns, what does he do? He vetoes a bill that would have addressed his concerns and make sure that we increase transparency and improve communication. So I ask my colleagues to, in the final effort that we have as a Legislature, the 29th Guam Legislature, to put into statute a process that will put Guam first. And I'm hopeful, Madam Speaker, that this time around, we'd get enough support to have an override and that when the Legislature does override this bill, hopefully and thankfully, it wouldn't be because we're unhappy with the Administration or anything that they've done so far. Really, it would be because we want to be a part of an effort that would ensure that we get the best deal possible with the military buildup. If every one of you right now are satisfied with how we have high-ranking military officials, top brass, or we have a Congressional delegation, if you're happy with the fact that you're being snubbed as a policymaker, then don't vote for the override. But if you can remember in the last two years, every time we had a Congressional delegation to Guam and how the Legislature was bypassed, how they automatically met with the Governor, and if you can reach from within and recall how angry we were, frustrated we were that we're not part of a very important process, because we are elected in our own right, then I ask that you please support this override. And this is the ninth attempt and I've made it as passionately as I can to ask our colleagues, Madam Speaker, to support the override. So I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to lobby our colleagues to finally put in statute a process that would put Guam first. Situs Masih.
On the motion, Speaker Benn, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Situs Masih, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the override. You know, it is the ninth attempt and so maybe this bill is a cat that it's got nine lives. And for me, I look at a cat as an acronym for Camacho's All-Star Team. And that's what this bill is going to give. We're gonna give a team that is gonna have the interests of the people of Guam coordinated through one single point of contact with the military and discussing issues related to the military buildup. And it is an all-star team and it is, without a doubt, going to be Camacho's team. He will be the quarterback, he will be the MVP, but he certainly needs a supporting cast. And in this case, I don't mind playing a supporting cast. I don't mind supporting the Governor's efforts to try and ensure that in the military buildup that the people of Guam are taken care of. And he needs that supporting cast. Because as in any team, one all-star player doesn't always lead to a championship or victory. We've seen that happen so many times. We see it happening now, that even with the all-star MVP on, leading this team, that he needs additional help from the supporting cast. And so that when Vice goes to the Governor and says, "We are fully informing you and you are totally in the know with regards to everything," and the Governor says, "No," he can say, "And here's my team that agrees with me, that you haven't contacted, that you haven't informed fully, and we agree on it." Otherwise, we have the Governor and Vice ended up saying, "But I work with your people all the time. They know exactly what I'm doing. Your Chamorro Land Trust Director knows that I'm surveying Chamorro Land Trust lands. Your Ancestral Land Director knows that I'm surveying Ancestral Lands. What's the problem?" And the Governor's saying, "You're going over my head." Well, it seems like he's going below his head. And if that's the case, then we're gonna be a little bit below the Governor watching out to make sure. So I understand the Governor's hesitancy maybe, but I want to assure the Governor that this is not to usurp him, this is to support him. I want this bill to pass because I want to work with the Governor. I want to support his efforts in ensuring that the people of Guam do not get left behind in the military buildup and that we, through the sheer magnitude of what we are facing, have all hands on deck with regards to ensuring that things don't move and move quickly and leave us behind. Much more important, leave the people of Guam behind to shoulder the burden of this military expansion. And, you know, I certainly believe that the Governor can use our help, that I'm willing to give him that help, but it's got to be in a team format and you can't be, you know, we can't be even perceived as being on another team. That we have to have this single point of effort and point of contact in terms of moving forward, the planning for military expansion here on Guam and the Government of Guam's attempts to ensure that we have the best hands on deck, the best minds available to ensure that when we in fact are facing the federal officials, that we are united, that we have the support of every single policy body on this island in terms of what we want and what do we expect them to give to the people of Guam for the privilege and honor of ensuring that the efforts of ensuring global security through the enhancement of national security assets here on Guam in fact ensure that it's not at the detriment or it's not at the expense of the people of Guam. And I think this process outlined in this bill is a solid, solid way of approaching this and ensures that we have the best people on the team headed by our MVP, quarterback, Governor Camacho, but certainly bringing on additional players into the game to ensure that we all can support each other and ensuring that the people of Guam are the ones that are gonna score. It's as simple as that and hopefully, three squared is a charm. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Benn. Senator Guthertz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. I stand to support the override for this bill. Over the last four weeks, Madam Chair, I've been trying to collect as much information as I can regarding the status of the military buildup. And I must tell you that getting information has been very, very difficult. Not just from the Governor's office, but from the military, the Joint Program Office, and other entities that supposedly are involved in this process. It has become very clear to me that we basically are left out of the loop, not by chance, but by intent. And that has got to stop. This Legislature is gonna be approached in the future to be asked to approve certain actions with respect to the buildup. And we are in no position to do so without having the vital information that's required to represent the best interests of our people. That is why this Guam First Commission is critical. So I stand to support the override and I encourage my colleagues to please do so. Otherwise, the people of Guam and this Legislature will be continually left in the dark. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Guthertz. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Luhon, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support for the ninth time as well in the override and the initial passing of the bill by this Legislature. Madam Speaker, we can go back to when we first heard about the military buildup here and yourself, me, and Senator Cruz, Speaker Impinko at the time, Senator Brown, and about three of the village Mayors had gone to Okinawa to see for ourselves the situation over there with the military buildup. Before our departure as well on the 28th, we passed a resolution calling for the needs for the civilian side to the tune of $2.4 billion. And since, Madam Speaker, we had passed numerous resolutions in regards to the military buildup. We also had an opportunity, or I guess when we had a field hearing out here conducted by Congresswoman or Dolget Christiansen from the Virgin Islands, we saw again what had happened up the University of Guam. Our Speaker at the time, Speaker Forbes, was slated to speak or to testify. He was taken ill that day and was represented by Vice Speaker at the time, by Speaker Calvo. Only to have Speaker Calvo arrive at that hearing and not be allowed to speak because Speaker Forbes was the only one slated to speak and he therefore could not have a representative. Although even in this House, the Speaker in his absence, the acting Speaker, the Vice Speaker becomes the acting Speaker. And that was such, that was such an insult not to have his representative speak on behalf of the people of this, of this body in regards to that. And only in the insistence of this body that there was another field hearing that was conducted down at the Hilton Hotel. I as well, as the Governor is asking now for a replacement of retired General Vice, I as well ask for his resignation because he could not answer any questions. And I said, "Well, you know, maybe we need a general that has more stars, that have, that can answer more questions because you can't answer any of our questions." And so with that, Madam Speaker, again, we've had the frustration of being shunted and being, again, passed on in regards to our importance in regards to this buildup and the expertise and the knowledge we have to bring to the table. Although we have always reacted in a timely manner to present what this body had passed to the negotiating team. We reacted simultaneously as the negotiations were going on between the Defense Department and the Japanese Diet. We acted in such a manner that we had our resolutions transmitted. However, to this, to this date, when we do get the opportunity to meet for five or maybe even 15 minutes to these visiting delegations, these codells that come out here, they have no knowledge of what this body had passed. We have to constantly repeat our stories and constantly try to get these resolutions and constantly tell them about these past four years. Or the, yeah, the past, yeah, going on four years now when we've learned about the military buildup. So we need to speak as one united voice, one cohesive body in regards to this buildup. Because as we see right now, we, there are talks in regards to the delayed movement and in fact, are they gonna be bringing that much or many or whatever it may be? We have no knowledge, whether in the buildup or the, or lack thereof, we have no knowledge. This body and the people of Guam are owed the united voice. And I think with the Guam First Commission, this will be able to do it and again, it will outlive the, again, the life of the remainder of this Administration. And it'll go on to the next Administration, which will probably see that military buildup happen then. But it's very crucial and critical that it be in place now. So we get the players, as Senator Panglinen adequately said, that the quarterback of this Commission will be that of the Governor. And, but he needs to be able to have a team of players with the expertise and knowledge to be able to speak as one united voice. So again, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the override of Senator Respecho's bill, the Guam First Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Respecho, you are recognized as the mover of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate all the comments made on behalf of the support to override this bill. I need to say that it's the veto of Bill Number 378. The earlier, the earlier version of Bill 33 was amended to include additional concerns that some of our colleagues had. So when I made the motion and I was saying the Governor's veto, Bill 33 should have been Bill Number 378.
Okay, so everybody understand then that it is vetoed Bill Number 378?
It's the latest version.
It's on page 16 of page three.
Thank you.
So on the motion then to place the bill, override the veto bill of Number 378, notwithstanding the Governor's veto on the voting file, no objections, so ordered. Senator Guthertz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the Governor's objections to Bill 327, an act to add a new section to Chapter 63 of Title V, Guam Code annotated, relative to indigenous fishing rights, I'd like to move that Bill Number 327 be placed on the voting- I'd like to move that Bill Number 327 be placed on the voting file with discussion.
On the motion, so would you like to continue to discuss it?
Thank you Madam Chair. You know, we had a lengthy discussion on this bill in our last session when we passed it. And I don't want to go through the whole history of it and all the associated information. But I would like to stand here and say that I am very committed to the intent of this bill and I believe that it sets a program where finally indigenous fishing practices and traditions can be recognized through a joint partnership with the Department of Agriculture of the Government of Guam. The bill calls upon the Department of Agriculture of the Government of Guam to develop indigenous fishing programs and cultural recognition and to develop rules and regulations to promote that objective. That's what the bill does. And the bill also requires the Department of Agriculture in developing these programs and the associated rules and regulations to meet with and work with the recognized indigenous groups of the island. So Madam Chair, I am proud to stand here to ask my colleagues to support the override of the governor's veto of Bill 27 and to move it to the third reading file. Thank you.
On the motion, are there any speakers? Yes, it's on the voting file. Speaker Ben, you are recognized.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was talking about the bill, supporting T S D, Bill 327, but I'm overriding the minimum of the government. But my boss is to say, Guam, she knew when to take company. The mother that I'm a guru, not my company, half a steam, a lie or a bill, no, a popo pony. The lady, you know, para tababa, po go easy, my lucky marine preserve, the machine, I am, machine, how did she know, who mess can get a little bit, so I need to pay guy, did he marine preserve, Guam, he knows, but I'm a man, my land, a tempo, not a peg, guy, did he marine preserve, the he knows, he did, he knows, he, mona possibly, did he marine preserve, parewa, nah, he knows, nipoguni, my popo, ni, gi, ni, gi, be 2027, ti differentiate out, I'm getting, let me know, differentiate out, so my account, try those, which let me know, I'm getting, tanoy, it out, out, tonu, a turidot, na para Guam, a turidot near, and direct to near, po famesca, Tai Manu, ni, my men, messca, is I know, near, is I know, sign, I know, it out, to Moana, I need my men, messca, the, the, my account, trust in a dose, so, who, 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 na it out, out, ta, po, ni, my, go, 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 esti, na direct, po, fan, my, recognize, get a little misti, na, ilai, na parewa, mina la gu, near, na, I'm getting, my, po, famesca, ti, po, famesca, na, put, edzo, no, mina la gu, near, po, my, la, say, I, we, and so, fan, hono, sa, don't, cool, deep, freeze, gi, gi, ma, ti, eno, my, la, go, po, famesca, Tai Manu, in, la, la, it, Zamor, gi, tanu, Zamor, and he, na, por, open, a popo, nisti, da, edzo, marine preserve, guy, guy, edzo, sempry, da, she, I, I, we, I, ni, my, guy, get a little bit, you, see, I, my, my, yo, da, see, I, my, 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 guy, we, I, gi, ni, tanota, da, I'm getting, tanoy, a turidot, po, famesca, it out, out, tonu, Tai, we, I, I, gas, ni, my, men, messca, ti, my, la, say, at, na, esti, be, us, to, radio, Tai Manu, na, le, le, ku, my, go, here, esti, utah, it, I, na, for, to, si, pescador, esti, da, man, ma, like, esti, ma, like, esti, na, pescador, ma, like, stat, on, near, da, ni, ti, unia, da, my, fan, I, go, esti, na, ta, out, to, who, messca, who, who, mono, esti, da, ekongo, edzo, my, lucky, master's thesis, gi, University of Guam, da, esti, scientist, ni, a, to, to, we, don, near, nu, marine scientist, ni, a, to, to, we, don, near, master's thesis, who, mo, zoom, we, ni, gi, fan, I, is, the, Ganya, be, da, pat, ti, gi, don, near, nu, master's thesis, pu, di, at, tulai, fan, I, at, u, fun, quanto, na, tulai, da, sus, ti, sa, ti, pescador, esti, na, scientist, da, who, mo, zoom, we, da, len, ya, fan, I, a, cuenta, at, u, fun, fan, I, 2,800, na, tulai, a, soda, get a little bit, di, quadrant, you, do, na, ni, a, peg, nu, nu, lucha, na, Tai, we, ni, na, lucha, na, Tai, we, ni, na, lucha, get a little bit, 2,800, na, tulai, a, soda, da, at, u, fun, pu, po, get, to, no, Tai Manu, nu, my, my, yo, go, zan, Tai Manu, co, ho, ho, co, ki, we, I, esti, it, Zamor, ni, pescador, da, ma, like, who, messca, wa, za, was, gi, fa, quarenta, soda, Tai Manu, la, say, I, we, I, na, ni, scientist, he, I, my, no, da, 2,800, da, esti, expert, na, Zamor, fisherman, quarenta, a, soda, my, go, I, no, la, say, he, he, I, a, soda, we, I, pu, ni, I, 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 and, ma, ma, like, I, scientist, my, my, no, fun, ki, pescador, my, messca, it, he, I, 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 I.
Very welcome Senator Speaker Ben. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wanted to, I spoke to the author of the bill and my concerns and she was about to, I think, bring those point of information with regards to this. And this is, you know, we all recognize the value of the intent of the legislation, but we all also recognize that laws have been passed in the past in our history that have ultimately resulted in unintended consequences. And I don't want us to go down a road of repeating the past. So I would like to ask the author, and I think this is an appropriate time, just to address the second paragraph, or third if you will, from the letter from the governor of his veto, that the, in stating, in quotes, "The Department of Agriculture's Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources and the Bureau of Statistical Plans Coastal Zone Management Program could potentially lose more than $1.5 million annually if the bill is enacted in law." So if the, if the author would be able to respond to that, because he talked about in the preceding sentence that a significant number of local government employees, particularly those in resource management agencies, rely entirely or almost entirely on federal funds for their salaries and program costs. Is this in fact the case? So...
Will the author then yield?
Certainly.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Miss Madam Chair, colleague, Tenorio. You know, this is a very interesting statement the governor has in his letter. And I find it quite ironic that that would even be included in his letter because nowhere in this bill, is there anything in this bill that would prejudice any of the programs currently under the purview of the Guam Department of Agriculture? If anything, this bill would give impetus to the Guam Department of Agriculture to look for additional federal grant money through the Native American Act and other acts that recognize indigenous traditions and practices in many places in the United States, including American Samoa, including Alaska, including the Virgin Islands, and including the state of Hawaii. I believe that that statement simply is contained in that letter to throw off the interest and support for this bill. There is no impending detrimental impact on any federal funds because the bill does not provide for any fishing in the marine preserves. It simply asks the Department of Agriculture to come up with programs and rules and regulations to recognize indigenous fishing practices and cultural traditions. That's what the bill does. So I don't see how anything there could be construed as a threat to any federal money or any federally funded jobs. If anything, it should give impetus to the Department of Agriculture to use its leadership to identify additional monies to support training and educating our young people in indigenous fishing traditions and practices. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Guthers. Was she able to answer your question?
Yeah, I believe so. I want to get to the heart of this bill as I see it in section two, the last page, which is page three, where it reads, "The Department of Agriculture is hereby tasked to develop rules and regulations to put this policy into effect and submit the draft rules and regulations in accord with the AAA process to the legislature for review and approval. Such rules and regulations may revise annually for revision through the same AAA process." And then it talks about composition and then is the rules need to be submitted within 90 days. Madam Speaker, I don't see how, and you know, I'm trying to, trying to take the governor's veto to heart and see, are we in fact going to be jeopardizing jobs? As I see this, it's saying that the indigenous fishing rights of our people, the Chamorro people, as defined in previous legislation, is to be recognized and by virtue of the recognition, we are to come up with some policies on how to try to recognize that those fishing rights then come back to this body and then are looked at and approved by the legislature. So sometime in March, Madam Speaker, if this thing is overridden, we're going to be looking at another process, looking at the AAA and of course, whether or not, I believe we act, I think it's in 90 days from the time that we receive that transmittal, they become law if they're not objected by the legislature. So right now, there is no immediate, as I see it, there is no immediate threat on jobs or federal programs. If those policies and rules that are brought to us through the AAA process ultimately are found to be offensive by those people involved, of course, those at the Department of Agriculture, et cetera, and the composition of the committee that puts this task force recommendations together, then they can talk to us about what the impact will be at that point. But I don't think currently there is any threat to government jobs. And I think that there's some value in making sure that we're not going to be in fact putting people out of work or are we going to be violating the same things that we as a body have already put in place, including the preserves, including the comments made by my preceding speakers. So I too rise in support of Bill 327's override and I support the motion placing on the voting file. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Tenorio. Are there any other speakers? So on the motion, notwithstanding the objections of the governor to place veto Bill Number 327 on the voting file for an override, no objections and so ordered. Senator Respecho, you are recognized.
Can I get a one minute recess real short?
We're going to take a minute recess.
[inaudible]
What numbers is yours?
It might actually be 1615 in your favor. Frank gets his way.
Our bill. Our.
What?
Just a question, Madam Speaker. Our bill, but just for the next two days, right? This is not a Monday, Tuesday, after class, this bill.
Which bill?
All these. Okay, so the next one, because it's just the water, we're going to come in court on, you know, to...
You don't make that general, I'm trying to go next to it.
I know, but I, Johnny.
Oh, no, it's not me. There was nothing.
I heard it, it was really present.
Where was the party?
PC, right?
Wait, wait.
Oh, yeah.
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 The legislature's back in session. Senator Respecho, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. At your instructions, we passed out the listing of all the bills which we are going to place on the second reading file. I just want to add three more bills toward the bottom, Bill 314, Bill 397, and Bill 368. And...
The library?
The library?
It's there.
The Rosa?
The Rosa Aggie Moore Library?
Yeah, it's here.
355.
355.
And that if this, if my motion to place all of these bills on the second reading is adopted...
numbers?
Okay, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
And then I need to make another motion that if in the event we get to a bill and either the sponsor is not ready or there's no committee report, that the bill is just set aside, we go to the next bill, and then immediately upon the author's signal that his bill, his or her bill is ready, then it goes, it follows suit, and it goes right in line with where it should have been.
On that objection without any, I mean, on that motion without objections, so ordered.
I'm not objecting, there's no motion.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recess till 1:30.
Two.
Two o'clock.
Two.
Can I make a motion, one of, we'll rise when we come back to vote.
Okay, so we're going to be in recess until 2:00 this afternoon.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move a few legislative concurrences from the Committee on Health and Human Services, Homeland Security, on the appointment of Ms. Lulian Guerrero to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees with the recommendation to confirm, to place this in the voting file, as well as the appointment of Mr. J. Peter Roberto to serve as Director, Department of Public Health and Social Services with the recommendation to confirm.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go, we proceed down to the voting file to entertain the two vetoed bills.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. I'm going to ask the clerks to, to please read the vetoed bill number 378.
Vetoed bill number 378 EC is amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Respecho, Judith P. Guthers, B.J. F. Cruz, and others. An act to add a new chapter 23 to Title I, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a Commission Guahan in Nena, the Guam First Commission on the Military Mission in Guam, and to amend section 2102 of Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to representation of both genders on boards and commissions.
Roll call. Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Benjamin Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon?
No.
Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers? Senator Sajaki? Senator Lohan?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Okay.
Senator Palacios?
Aye.
Speaker Pangolinan?
Aye.
Senator Respecho?
Aye.
Senator Shimizu?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? On the matter of vetoed bill number 378, notwithstanding the objections of Imagalán Guahan, the votes are 12 ayes, 3 nays. Bill number 378 EC is overwritten by Imina Bente Nueve in Alejes Letran, Guahan. Congratulations, Senator Respecho. Bill number, vetoed bill number 327. Will the clerks please read?
Bill number 327 LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthers, R. J. Respecho, F. F. Blas Jr., and others. An act to add a new section 63133 to chapter 63 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to indigenous fishing rights.
Roll call. Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Benjamin Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon?
Yes.
Speaker Forbes?
Aye.
Senator Guthers?
Aye.
Senator Sajaki?
Yes.
Senator Lohan?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Okay.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Speaker Pangolinan?
Aye.
Senator Respecho?
Aye.
Senator Shimizu?
Aye.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? On the matter of vetoed bill number 327 LS, notwithstanding the objections of Imagalán Guahan, the votes are 15 ayes and unanimous support. Vetoed bill number 327 is overwritten by Imina Bente Nueve in Alejes Letran, Guahan. Senator Respecho, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to the second reading file to take up the...
On the motion without objections, so ordered. Bill number 273, 270 by Senator Palacios. That's your bill. We're now on the second reading file.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to request that that be, be placed on, I guess, on file.
In, in the inactive file? On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 386, Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, so is... Okay, we'll come back to Senator Calvo. Bill number 348, Senator Respecho. Sergeant Arms, can you please ask the senators to please come into the hall? Senator Respecho on bill number 348. No, we're going down, so...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 348, as amended by the author, be accepted for this, be accepted for discussion.
So, okay, there's no...
And the committee report, there's, as amended by the author.
As amended, okay. So, so, on the motion then to, to accept bill number 348 as amended by the author, there being no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. I move that Bill 348 be placed on the third reading file with very brief discussion.
Yes, please, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my dear colleagues, I rise to ask for your support for this bill. Basically, what it would do is when a, when a member of the armed forces is deployed, oftentimes when they come back, the last thing they ever want to do or, or have to take care of is their driver's licenses, their health certificates, or maybe even their vehicle registration. And so what this bill would do is simply a quality of life issue in that it would extend beyond what USARO provides for these individuals. It'll give them six months, to give them ample time, about six months, to be able to go and renew their permits, their health certificates, their vehicle registration, and also any permits they may have for hunting and fishing and firearms. And so this bill was publicly heard, and I want to thank Senator Guthers for hearing this bill for me while we were in APIL, Madam Speaker. So that's basically, it'll just allow any member who's deployed and comes back, it'll give them six months from the time of their arrival to take care of any permits, certificates, driver's license, vehicle registration. And there was overwhelming support at the public hearing for this piece of legislation.
On the motion, are there any other speakers? There being none, then bill number 34, as amended by the author, has been sent down to the third reading filed. Bill number 356, Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 356, Madam Chair, is a bill...
Is your mic on?
I move to, this is the amended version of Bill 356. Madam Chair, I move to accept the amended...
Version of Bill 356.
Move to accept Bill 356, as amended by the author, on that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 356...
Wait, Senator Guthers, you want to make a motion then to, to place...
To place it on third reading. Thank you. And to discuss the bill.
Yes, please, continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 356 is a bill that basically relates to creating a Military Family Leave Act for Guam. And the bill is a bill that is consistent with similar bills that have been passed by a number of states and also our sister jurisdictions in the territories and Commonwealths of the United States. Basically, Madam Chair, this bill would allow the spouses or immediate family members of deployed service members from the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, the Coast Guard, the Marines, to spend time with their loved ones, up to a maximum of 15 days, either prior to their deployment or when they return for brief rest and recreation. And the employees involved would be government of Guam employees who would be allowed to take leave without pay to participate in this program. That's the intent of the bill. As you know, Madam Chair, we have significant numbers of young men and women from Guam who have been deployed to areas of combat, such as Afghanistan, such as Iraq, as well as areas such as Kuwait, to the Horn of Africa, to participate in our nation's fight against terrorism and threats to our nation as well as other freedom country, freedom-loving countries in the world. And many of our service members who are deployed are required to spend some of their time prior to deployment in preparing various legal documents through their service commands, which involve their wives and/or immediate family members be present. This includes documents regarding potential survival or death of a service member that the immediate family member must participate in signing, as well as other matters, administrative matters, such as financial, powers of attorney, power of attorney over children, and similar items. In addition, when a service member is deployed, after serving a certain period of time, they are allowed to take a few days R and R. And of course, their goal would be to spend that time with their immediate family mother, member, whether it's a wife or a mother, or someone very, very close to them. So this would simply authorize the employees involved who have a husband or a father or a brother, perhaps, who's deployed, to spend time with them for these purposes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee, by the way, recommended to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. On the motion, Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm a little confused because the author had indicated that the, the bill extends only to the government employee or employer. And if you read the bill on page four, I'm sorry, on page five, under provisions, it says a qualified employer shall, or, hold on. No, on, on page five, under Leave Required 10104, notwithstanding any other provision of law, qualified employers shall allow a qualified employee to take, you know, leave up to 15 days. And if you take a look at the definition of qualified employer, it means any individual corporation, company, firm, state, government of Guam instrumentality, federal government instrumentality on Guam. So it, it's inconsistent with the author's explanation that this is, only applies to government of Guam as the employer. And now we're trying to, to impose this on, on the private sector. And, and I think that if to bring us into consistency, the bill needs to be amended to, to reflect that.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Senator Guthers, you have...
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I, I would not object to an amendment to remove all references other than government of Guam.
Well, amendment hasn't been made yet, so as the author... Well, amendment hasn't been made yet, so as the author, are you going to make the amendment?
I will make the amendment right now, Madam Chair. One second, please.
On page three?
Yes.
Line 16.
Line 16. Qualified employer... Hold it a second. Actually, it's on page three, qualified employer. Please remove the language on line 17 that refers to corporation, company, firm, or state. So that qualified employer simply would mean any government of Guam instrumentality. And remove federal government instrumentality on Guam also. So the reference would be simply the government of Guam, the military-related unit on Guam, municipal village instrumentality, public authority, or any other governmental entity on Guam, subdivision that employs 15 or more employees, that would remain. So we're removing, Madam Chair, again, on line 17, corporations, company, firm, state, and line 18, we would remove federal government instrumentality on Guam.
So what, line 16, I thought you mentioned individual?
Means any individual, government of Guam instrumentality. I don't think individual harms anything, but we're referring to the government of Guam, that would stay.
So maybe means, qualified employer means the government of Guam?
Means any government of Guam instrumentality.
Why don't we take a minute recess, okay?
Yeah, because it would be a corporation or government of Guam. Because I think they have a federal provision that covers that. Probably covering the government of Guam or any instrumentality. Means any government of Guam instrumentality. Instrumentality. Right, and then, but leave a military-related unit on Guam, because that would include our National Guard and our Armed Forces. Take out federal government instrumentality of Guam. Right. State. Correct, that's the only change.
The legislation's back in session. Senator Guthers, you want to please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The change would be on page three, number two, qualified employer means any government of Guam instrumentality, military-related unit on Guam, municipal village instrumentality, public authority, or any other governmental entity on Guam, subdivision that employs 15 or more employees.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator Guthers. On the motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. Of course, it is a sound policy. However, I'd like to offer an amendment on page five, line 11. And that is just a single word, which is to substitute the word shall by the word may. The current practice of leave within the government of Guam is that it allows for some degree of discretionary decision on the part of appointing authority, so that with such discretion, the appointing authority would be able then to balance between a public need and a personal need. And so the word may, I believe, would be sufficient to accommodate the need of, the personal need of individuals. And so my amendment is to substitute the word shall with the word may.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. On the motion, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the motion by my good, I guess, colleague and of course, former Public Safety Officer. And I understand exactly what he's saying, because many of the times, we've been talking about this for six years now, that many of our agencies truly are really shorthanded. And these guys are coming back from military deployment, but they're brothers in uniform, and many of the other government agencies that are not in uniform have been carrying that load. And we want to be able to give them the opportunity to in fact, spend time with their families, but they are in fact, public servants. And to the extent that we are able to, without compromising truly what has been a major drain on this government insofar as resources, in human resources, we need to get these guys back on the job as soon as possible. And I am a compassionate guy like everybody else here, but we also recognize that how many times we've been told in every public hearing from many agencies where they're shorthanded because people are deployed and because when they come back, they are really looking forward to that because this government is incurring a substantial cost in overtime, in stress-related activities that many of our employees are undergoing. So I appreciate and I support the amendment from my colleague, because making it a requirement that they be given two weeks may be something that is tantamount to the straw that breaks the camel's back. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. So on the motion then, without any objections, so ordered. On the motion then to place bill 356, as amended by the author and further amended... Oh, would you like to speak on the bill, on the motion?
Which motion?
356, I'm going to send it down to third reading. You want to speak on it, so Senator Spalding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I may ask the author of this bill a question, if you would yield to the question.
Senator Guthers, you want to hear the question first, or are you going to go ahead and yield?
Well, no, in essence, it deals with the issue of the qualified employee. And I would take that that's the employee who would then go to their management and ask for the leave. And as the definition of that qualified employee, as opposed to just a spouse, the legislation as introduced basically states that a qualified employee is a spouse, comma, authorized representative, comma, designated next of kin, comma, or an attorney-in fact of a qualified member. And I just want to find out, what does she mean by authorized representative? And if I could?
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. Generally, this refers to the individual that the military designates as his or her authorized representative. It could be the wife, it could be the mother, it could be a sister. But it's up to them to designate that in the forms that they fill out.
If I may, just, I'm not really sure if I may continue the question. Do you know what the purpose of that authorized representative is? Is that become the attorney?
That's the family member that is able to act on their behalf while they're deployed. For example, the authorized representative is the person that's allowed to receive their paycheck, if they so designate. It's a person that's authorized to transact business on their behalf, if so designated. It could be the wife, it could be the mother, it could be a sister.
I guess my...
Yeah, whoever, yeah.
I appreciate that answer. And if I may ask another question, the relevance of having the attorney-in fact be able to get leave?
Well, sometimes a military member may in fact designate a loved one as their attorney-in fact who can act on their behalf.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, you know, the language covers all the different permeations that come up in these forms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, my problem with this is that I believe the intent of this act is to allow the spouse or the family members of a soldier, a citizen soldier who's been deployed, you know, to spend some time with that soldier. I would like to make an amendment, if I may, to this and to delete on page three, at the line one, and going on to line two, the authorized representative designated, oh, actually, we can leave in designated next of kin. But I would like to, I move to delete the words authorized representative or attorney-in fact. Basically, again, the intent of the bill, I believe, is for the family members to be able to spend time with the citizen soldier, and I like that. But again, if we open up too much, then I think it's subject to some abuse. And again, as the previous speaker noted, that we have difficulty as it is right now within government of Guam because of these citizen soldiers leaving their posts or, you know, to go fulfill their missions in the military. And so I'd just like to leave in the spouse or the designated next of kin.
On the amendment, Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I understand the intent of the amendment, but one of the reasons for this kind of legislation is to allow for the individual who is to be deployed to allow him or her the opportunity to get their bank records in order. And this is why the spouse would have this opportunity to go with them to the bank. If they're not on a joint account, that spouse will have to... You know, when someone is deployed, I've never served in the military, so I've never been deployed, but I can imagine how much stress that causes on the individual family in that household and the kind of things that need to be done in order to prepare for that family member not being there. So to delete the attorney-in fact really goes against the whole genesis behind this legislation. So I rise in opposition to the amendment, even though it's well-intentioned.
Thank you, Senator Rispicio. Senator Tina Munoz Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I can appreciate where the good senator from Timuning is concerned when he talks about the abuse that may go on in reference to this. But for me, being a military dependent and having both my spouse and my children a part of the military armed forces, I can understand why the need for the authorized representative and/or attorney-in fact is necessary. And I say this is because an authorized representative may not be the next, just the next of kin, but may be a fiancee who's the only family member, but in reality, based on the definition of a next of kin is not there. And of course, in that same token, if you have an attorney or record, it doesn't have to be an immediate relative. But it's that person who is authorized to deal with all the personal records and all the personal items that do with that armed service member, armed forces service member. So though I can understand where the good senator is at, I'm going to object to that amendment, to delete it. And I want to keep that authorized representative in and/or attorney-in fact because there is a distinction in that policy on the breakdown of those who can be considered close to that armed service member, force member. So I'd like to keep that language in. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Lawrence. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as I read the bill, and on page two, I'd like to read portions of it at least. And what it says, the purpose of this is in order to serve families of those troops currently serving the military conflicts, of course, and throughout the world. But more importantly, it says here is that to assure that these families are able to spend time together during the qualified service members leave to and from, and then also anyone who's returned from R and R. R and R is rest and recreation leave during the deployment or reintegration. And I understand that there are many other individuals that you can consider, of course, authorized representative, yes, such as fiancees or their significant other, or what have you. But when you think of R and R, Mr. Speaker, I don't think of an attorney who's going to be taking some time off during my rest and relaxation. I don't think, you know, anybody else that, yes, maybe I'll designate the person if there's no other extended family members here, who's going to pick up my check and conduct other personal or business affairs, you know, for me. When I think of this, of rest and recreation, I'm thinking of families really coming together who want to spend some time to rest and have recreation, or, you know, just being together, being with the family, you know, that. Unless, of course, you know, and I don't know what language we're going to put here, but I can see an abuse of this, you know, for anybody to say, well, yes, I'm the authorized representative and, you know, the person can come and maybe the day I'll meet with them and say, okay, these are all your affairs and your matters, but then I'm going to take off, you know, for the rest of the day. So I do support the amendment, and I hope my colleagues would think about this. I mean, I'm not saying that we're not in favor of our men and women who do go out there and, you know, we definitely, I definitely do, I can appreciate that. I have a sister who went to Vietnam and came to Guam, came to the home, of course, of recruitment because there are family members here where they want to spend some time with family members. Otherwise, they could go anywhere else. And suppose their rest and recreations is somewhere else other than Guam, and then what? So they get the orders that they are resting and recruiting, but yet the individual is totally in another area. But that's okay, I understand that my colleagues are all having their individual discussions. I said what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate it.
Right. On the amendment, anybody else would like to speak on the amendment? Okay. Okay, I understand there's an objection to the amendment. Yeah. Let's take a one-minute recess.
Unless you limit the attorney-in fact just to view...
Attorney-in fact doesn't mean a regular attorney, it's not a regular attorney. Your wife could be your attorney-in fact, your father could be your attorney-in fact. But it may not be the spouse. It depends on who they get.
Could be a significant other, a best friend, a girlfriend that's a part of the family, but it's of no blood relation.
No, you're not, you're just recognizing. If you're living with someone for 10 years, how would you designate that?
Well, wait, you went from child to male, right? So the already the agency had had the option of giving them 15 days, correct? And then you went from the family now, the family member may be able to get an angry nut. So it's really, and it doesn't think it's unpaid, isn't it? So it's their law, I should pay, besides the two weeks off unpaid leave. So for me, no follow...
I say it should be all domestic partners, and you must recognize the...
I can just see where this argument is going. I can just see where this argument is going. And Ben, if we don't ask one thing, right?
Ready? Ready?
Don't ask one thing.
Why not?
It's not recognized by the national.
Don't judge people, please.
I want to know how many can, what if you have adult children, can they call one of the others? So that entire family leaves?
Yeah, exactly, yes, of course. All the wonderful, everyone else is in the difference over.
Or is it just one person?
I think you're going beyond.
No, we don't know that, he may be that's it.
Okay, let's vote. I did, I tried before. I tried. I don't think they bring the whole entourage when you're having an RNR with your wife.
And if they are, then, I say we legalize that, too.
It's not just rest and recreation.
Now we're regulating what they should do in the bedroom?
The legislature is back in session. I have to admit that that was a lively discussion, so we're going to go ahead and call for the vote, and Senator Espaldón's amendment, which was on page three, which is to delete then authorized representative on line one, and then on line two was to delete or attorney in fact. So on the motion, then, all those who are in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so sorry, motion failed. I feel for all those who are proffering an amendment. Okay, on then the main motion to place Bill 356 as amended by the author and further amended on the floor, are there any objections to send it down to third reading? Oh, you want to speak on it? Okay, Senator Blas, then you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, and maybe as a suggestion to yield, if the author of the bill would like to yield, I guess there's a concern and a question.
You want to go ahead and ask your question first, and then I guess she can decide.
Basically, is it necessary that we say on page two, line seven, serving in the global war on terrorism, ma'am, there may be other conflicts, and I'm concerned that this is recognizing, and I know what the intent of this bill is, and once this global war on terrorism, this is basically just like a sunset provision. And so, can I have a one-minute recess so that I can talk to the...
Okay, one-minute recess is granted.
You want to take out Terry?
Yeah, take out, go, go, because it's like a sunset provision. But do you want this to be a perfect thing? Do you want this to be a perfect thing?
The point, the only purpose.
What happens if, what happens if January?
Well, if someone is recently, it's just terrorism.
Okay, so that's the intent, that's not true. Okay, just want to make sure.
Otherwise, anybody can say, hey.
The legislature is back in session, Senator Blas, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I think the question was basically answered by the author during that recess, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So on the motion, then, again, one more time, to send 35, Bill 356 as amended by the author and further amended on the floor, we have one more speaker, Senator Palacios, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, just a point of clarification, because there was an earlier amendment that this would pertain only to government Guam entities, so on page three, for example, item B, which is line four, I was reading that, and perhaps that now would not apply, because B sort of implies that it pertains to private employment, a performed service for hire for an employer for an average of 20 or more hours per week, but does not include an independent contractor. There appears to be inconsistency, I just want to point that out, that's all.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Guthers, are you going to provide any information?
Well, I just want to clarify that we do have some employees who are part-time in the government of Guam, including substitute teachers, they only teach a certain number of hours, so that's why we have this provision, and there are nurses that only work part-time and so forth.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Are there any more speakers? Yes, Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to be clear with the body, what was done a few minutes ago by my good colleague from Timuining, Senator Espaldón, was an attempt to try to tighten this thing up a little bit, and it really kind of doesn't sit very well with me that you have language that exists now, this is the language, for everybody's information, the effective part of this is the provisions. A qualified employer shall not retail, excuse me, actually, the other section, notwithstanding any other provision of law, a qualified employer shall allow a qualified employee to take up the 15 days of unpaid leave during a qualified leave period. Now, it went from shall to may, so it's an option, but it says the qualified employee, and in the previous section, which a good colleague tried to amend, was trying to tighten that up so that qualified employee is not just a spouse, includes authorized representative, includes an attorney in fact. I think you've allowed for a pretty substantial number of people to be included in this and looped into this leave, so that any number of people, as has been discussed previously, can in fact participate in this leave process. We already have a lot of problems right now with our leave system, and I really think this is a problem with regards to this section, and I know the amendment failed, but I'm just raising my own personal concerns about this, because I've been in legislative body for six years now, and I've seen a number of different abuses that have taken place, and I don't know, and of course, we don't have the supposition, the automatic conclusion that there is going to be abuse, but if you leave the loophole big enough, anything can get through, and that's in fact what was trying to be closed up, is saying, look, yeah, go spend time with your family, we understand that, go take leave if you want to, but your attorney in fact, you know, next of kin, that's your kids, your spouse, why do you need an authorized representative and attorney in fact to in fact take leave? So that's my concern that I have on this bill, I know where you're going, I support our men and women, I have family in the military, I understand that, but you're really, you're really leaving a big hole here, and I just want to let you know that that personally is a concern, and I support, and I will always support those who protect democracy and the freedom that we enjoy every day, but we have to be mindful about what the possibilities are here. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, Speaker, this is Madam Speaker.
Senator, Senator Guthers, I'm going to recognize you then as the mover and the author of this bill to close. Wait, but wait, before you even do, I want to make sure, because I saw somebody's hand up, I want to make sure first that everyone else has an opportunity first to speak. Okay, Senator Munya Barnes, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I promise to be really brief. First of all, I want to stand in full support of this Bill 356, and I understand where the good author of this legislation is going with this, I want, for the record, to state that other places in the nation, our nation, continue to have this provision in, for me, it's a win-win for both the families, those who are considered family to that service member. I'd also like to ask for the record, before I just proceed, is that if I could be the fourth sponsor on this, there's no objection with the author?
On the motion, then, without any objection, so ordered.
And again, Madam Speaker, I do support this effort, I understand where the good author, the intent of this bill, I think it's important so that there be clarity, and specifically is noted within the definition of the breakdown for the authorized representative, designated next of kin or attorney in fact, there are provisions in the rules and regulations that are with the military armed forces that meet the criteria of this, so I support the intent of this bill, and support this bill, and I thank the good author for letting me be a co-sponsor, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Guthers, then, to close.
Yes, thank you. In closing, Madam Chair, I have a suggestion, I'd like to amend line one on page three to address the concerns that were just presented. Insert the words, A is limited to a spouse or authorized representative or designated next of kin or attorney in fact of a qualified member. Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to address the concern, Madam Chair.
Senator Guthers, you also have, then, you're going to make the same amendment that should be reflected as well in the, in page two, where, on lines, line 13.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so...
By a spouse...
So the motion then will be for...
For both.
A, page three, line one, is limited to a spouse...
A spouse or a authorized representative...
Or a...
Or a designated next of kin or a attorney in fact of a qualified member. And then make the same adjustment on page two, on line 13.
So on that amendment, Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't change anything, it doesn't fix what I think is the problem, period. It's clear on the preceding page, we're talking about definitions, 10103 definition, the following definitions shall be used in interpreting this chapter. Number one, qualified employees, that's where we're defining who is eligible. Qualified employee means a person who satisfies all of the following, and then you go to subsection eight, is the spouse, authorized representative, designated next of kin, or attorney in fact of a qualified member, then it goes on to B, C. So it already means what the mover just said, is limited to, because that's by definition, if you don't meet this condition, then you're not a qualified employee. So you can't, I mean, it's dangerous rewriting this as you, as you put things on the floor and as issues are brought up, because the preceding sentence says, if you don't meet this condition, then you're not a qualified employee, and therefore, that doesn't make any difference, first of all, I mean, in meeting the concerns, and secondly, it already is a condition precedent for which you can be a qualified employee, so you're not really doing anything. As a matter of fact, you're making it worse, because it already says, if you're a qualified employee, you have to meet this condition, this condition, and that condition. The way you're writing it now is even worse Filipino English than the existing setup, so I would recommend against the amendment, and I object to it.
So on the, on the Guthers amendment, Senator Guthers?
I'd be happy to withdraw that amendment, and let us just get to the bill. Madam Chair, I think frankly, since we changed the word shall to may, it strictly is discretionary on the part of the approving authority, and I think that's adequate to deal with the concern. So with that in mind, I move that we proceed, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. So on the motion to place Bill 356 as amended by the author and further amended on the floor, to go down to third reading without any objection, so ordered. Senator Calvo on 386.
Madam Speaker, can we just take one-minute recess?
Okay, well...
One-minute recess, I just want to...
I mean, you won't lose your place, I can move on to the next bill.
Oh, no, second thought, I'll make a motion then, I'll make a motion. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to accept Bill 386, an act to appropriate funds for the operation maintenance of the Veterans Memorial Cemetery, I further move to place Bill 386 LS on the third reading.
Wait, wait, wait.
There is no, the only reason I asked for recess, I was assuming there was a...
Wait, Bill three, I'm looking for your bill, one second.
I was assuming, I thought that there might be an amended or a substitute, but there isn't, so with that, I'm just making the motion with, to accept and to place into the third reading. And if anyone would like to discuss it, I have no problem discussing it.
Okay, so you're making a motion to place Bill 386, then, on second, I mean, on third reading.
And for the expedition of the bills in the docket, I don't really want to comment unless anyone would like me to comment on the bill, I'm trying to move forward the particular bill.
Okay, so on the motion, then, to, to accept, I mean, to place Bill 386, then, on third reading, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator Calvo on Bill 387.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to accept Bill 387 LS as substituted by the committee, and the copy has just been turned to members of the body, and I'd like to further move to place Bill 387 as substitute committee in the third reading.
On the motion, then, to accept Bill 387 as substituted by the committee, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. No, now it's going to, that's only to accept, now, on the motion, then, to accept, so now on the motion, then, to, to place on Bill 387?
Yes, again, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill 387 as substitute committee on the third reading.
On the motion, then, to place Bill 387, Speaker Ben, you have your answer, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I have no problem with the bill, but, you know, every time I hear, I just want to know, how did we find this money, where did it come from, and, you know, why is it extra now that we can appropriate it, when I thought supposedly we were struggling, and we underfunded agencies and departments, and what else is out there that we can appropriate and save some for me next year? Thank you.
So on the motion, then, to place Bill 387 as substituted by the committee, and on third reading, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Bill number 234, Senator Guthers, is she... Senator Guthers, okay, so we're going down, then, to...
Yeah, just for the good of the cause, can we, especially the viewing public, can we just also read the preamble, it won't take us that long, because, you know, we just know 354 or 3...
Well, is she ready to come in, though?
No, no, but I'm saying, when we go to, as we go to the agenda, in addition to reading the number, you know, just elaborate what is the act going to do.
Okay, so who would you like to read, you wouldn't want me to read it every time?
Yeah.
Okay, but Senator Guthers is not yet available.
Madam Speaker, she just stepped out to, and she will be right back, so...
So we're going to go on to Bill, then, 384 by Senator Rispio, it's an act to adopt the personnel rules and regulations for aviation-related positions unique to airport operations and certified technical and professional employees as required by public law 29-24 and as received by the Legislative Secretary of Minabinti Nue Bina Leshra Tungguahan on November 7, 2008, and to make compensation and benefit adjustments for current employees effective on the first day of fiscal year 2009.
Madam Speaker, point of information, just based on that, Bill 359, was that entertained by Vice Speaker Shimizu?
I do not have a committee report, so, but it doesn't mean it's going to lose its position, as soon as everyone gets their committee report, we'll go on with it. So, Senator Rispio, you are recognized.
Thank you, I move that...
Thank you. I move that Bill 384 be, go down to the third reading file.
Is it, has it been, I'm trying to find, is it, has it been amended?
No, there was no amend, it wasn't...
Hasn't been amended, so the motion then is to place Bill 384 on the third reading file. Are there any objections, any discussion? Senator Panglinen, you have your hands up. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm just, I was trying to review the committee report and try to find the economic impact of this, what the effect would be. You know, I'm quite concerned with the way things are in our economy, that we are in fact now seeing a downturn in tourism. And typically, the only area that we can find, other than the tourist attraction fund, which is dependent on the arrivals, to generate revenue to stimulate tourism arrivals through advertising, promotions, and so forth, is through the hotel occupancy tax, is one way. But the other major way we've been able to encourage additional seats and promotions by our partners in tourism are the airlines and the vendors at the airport and so forth. And we typically responded to these downturns by providing incentives to these airlines to push flights to Guam and seat availability, and reduce the cost of coming to Guam. And we've done that by reducing landing fees and giving other incentives to the airlines. And if what this does is increases the operating costs at the airport, at a time when we're seeing a 17% drop in our tourism arrivals, is this the best time to add additional operating costs at the airport, which may limit our ability to provide some of these incentives that can assist our airline partners and our tourism partners into bringing tourists to Guam and trying to weather this downstorm and this downward trend in traveling? So, I'm, I'm trying to find what the effect is. And from a cursory view of an earlier report, I find some of the increases in this as quite alarming with regards to what we're seeing, you know? And I saw, I looked at, for example, let's go back to take a look at what happened with GPA and GWA, where we started out with the Certified Technical Professionals, and it was supposed to be 20 to those that were positions where people were resigning because of opportunities elsewhere and the disparity in salaries. And we gave the Consolidated Commission the authority to do these Certified Technical Professions. And what we found ourselves doing, and what we found the Consolidated Commission doing, for example, in GPA, was, all of a sudden, 95% of the positions were Certified Technical Professions. And I, I'm trying to find in this exactly what the percentage is for the coverage of the employees in terms of the increases, what that dollar figure is, the impact on the operating expenses of the airport and so forth. And, and I just don't have that. But, once again, you know, I just think that, I would like to get some kind of clarity in, in those questions, perhaps from the chair of the committee, perhaps from the bill author. But I really am, am concerned about the effect on this at this time to, to move in the direction of increasing operating costs. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank the retiring speaker for that question. Mr. Carlos Salas presented testimony, and he basically just outlines that the adoption of the rules is the first step toward updating the personnel policies, and the second step will be for the airport to implement a new pay structure, and that the airport commissioned a classification, compensation, and benefit study, which when finally adopted by the board, will form the basis of any necessary adjustments in compensation. I also don't, I'm not able to see an economic impact study, only that my understanding is that this bill would allow for the airport to move forward on an earlier public law, which recognized the need of the airport to hire and retain certified personnel. And so, once these rules and regulations have been adopted, if this bill is passed and signed into law, it'll be up to the, the continued compensation and benefits study that's being commissioned by the airport, and it'll be up to the airport board to adopt those findings, and then submit it to the legislature within 10 days after the passage of this adoption. I understand too, Madam Speaker, that the board would have to do their diligence in ensuring that any recommendations for pay reclassification would have to be in line with the current budget of the AB One Pat International Airport. And that basically gives me some sense of comfort that they're an autonomous agency, and that rightfully, as Carlos Salas, who is executive manager, pointed out, that they're going to continue to showcase the airport as they would any business with a sound business model. And so, I have some comfort in knowing that if we adopt these rules and regulations, it would be up to the board to determine whether or not to accept the compensation and benefits study, and whether or not to move forward in implementing this. You know, Madam Speaker, and my rationale for making this retroactive to October 1st, 2008, is simply because you can't, we cannot penalize the employees for the delay that management may have experienced in getting this compensation and benefit study commissioned, or any delay in, in finalizing this study. Those employees were told that that study should have been done several months ago, well before the October 1st deadline. And if you recall, this legislature adopted pay reclassifications for the law enforcement personnel. And so, if we want to establish parity, we have to start adopting these studies and making it retroactive to the time other public sectors in our government receive their reclassifications. I don't think my response was, would be helpful to the gentleman asking the question, only in that I wanted to lay the process by which this bill was introduced, and the purpose for which, for its introduction, and the manner in which this study will eventually be adopted pursuant to the, the airport board is authority to do so.
Senator Panglinen, were you, did he sufficiently answer your questions?
Yes, he did, Madam Speaker, but I find that there is an economic impact statement, that salaries at the airport are about 46% of the operating expenses at the airport. And the way that this is written will generate about $1.3 million in additional operating costs in salaries at the airport. So, I am concerned about that. I also am concerned in, you know, where we can compare, always, it's, once again, we're, we're kind of balkanizing these increase, these, you know, these pay raises and building greater disparity between government employment and the different departments and agencies of this government. There was a whole theory that is both practical and realistic with the implementation of the HACE study, and that is, of course, that equal work for equal pay. And what we're, what we've continually moved away from that, so that now it's, you know, pay according to what your department and agency can afford. And if they can afford more, they can give you more. If you, if you work for the general fund, too bad, you're out of luck, you know? And, and so, we've continually moved away from this, and, and we haven't been successful in, in, you know, stopping that tide, but it has created greater disparity between government employees. And I don't think that's fair, you know? I honestly don't think that's fair. We, we have here, for example, I, I don't even know how this treats the law enforcement people. Everybody's getting a raise. The law enforcement people were given a 40% raise over the four-year period. Now, is that applied to, is this pay raise and reintegrate, regrading of these positions also affect now those employees, or now are they just not evaluated because they're getting this 10%? So that they may not have the benefit of getting the evaluation done under this methodology? And is it going to now treat this law enforcement people at the airport, you know, in terms of, now, we're kind of changing the criteria then for positions within the, within the agency itself, so that other employees are compensated according to this? And safety, you know, the law enforcement employees at the airport are now, according to the law enforcement pay raise of, of that, that percentage is granted by statute? I'm made to understand that now they are taken out of this compensation schedule, and for the purpose of this compensation review, not included in this, because they were included in the other one. And why is that? Why are now they, are they not included in that statute? And if it's, we're rating the position itself, you know, shouldn't it be subject to this review also? My understanding, I don't, is that they're not. So, I, I understand, you know, the desire of the airport. Once again, you know, I asked GPA, when they did that review and compensation review, and everyone's always said, "We needed to hire people and stay because they're leaving, they're going off island, they're working elsewhere, because they're being recruited, and our pay scale can't compete." You know, and, and I asked GPA, "Well, give me your, your exit interview for the last five years of why people leave GPA." And we found in that review that only one person cited not enough pay as the reason for leaving. Everybody else had different reasons for leaving. And nobody was saying that, you know, "I got 10 recruiting calls from San Diego Power, and they were offering me $100,000 a year, so I went." Not only one person said that they left because the compensation was not sufficient. There were other reasons for that. And I don't even see that kind of survey in here, on why do they, if they're saying that all of these people, where are they going and why are they leaving? You know? Is it because of the politics of the management? Is it because of lack of pay? Is it because, you know, there, somebody's offering them 14 holidays a year, and the government only has 10? What drives these individuals to leave the, the employment of the airport? And how many have left? You know, and so forth? And why do we want to, and if, if the problem's not there, if it's not compensation, then let's build other mechanisms in there to build greater employee satisfaction. Maybe fairer treatment by management is what's needed. You know? Better working conditions, better scheduling, whatever the reasons are, we need to find out what those reasons are, and not just dump it on this, because it's so easy to say, "It's because of pay," and you can always find somebody else that gets paid higher somewhere else. You could do that for, for a clerk at the Division of Accounts. You can find somewhere else in the United States where a Division of Accounts clerk is being paid more, you know? But what is it, and, and where do we peg ourselves to? And again, I don't mind pegging ourselves to these criterias, but when it leaves everybody else behind, then I think we're doing a disservice to government and service and government employment, and we continue to fragment and chip away at what we had consolidated. And what we had consolidated, the only reason why we're, we're chipping away at that is because we're saying that we can't compete for these employees, yet I just don't see the, the number of people resigning, you know, from these departments and agencies. I just don't see it. They're retiring because grandkids are moving to the states, and they want to follow them for college, or children are moving, you know, off to, off island for school, and they want to go there, or they want a better school system for their peo, for their children still in school. But, I just, I, I don't see this, you know, don't see that kind of justification in the studies here. And when I look at some of the pay scales, I, I just think that in some instances, the compensation, you know, is, is something that you just don't see within the entire government service. And I think that, for me, I want to take a closer look at this, and, and I really have some, some real deep concerns with the way that this is. And again, I'm not, I'm not disputing the validity of the study, I'm just saying that, you know, for every position in this government, whether they be generally funded, or they be funded by the autonomous agencies, you can find somewhere else where that same task is being paid more money. But does that mean, what do we do with, with, with the others? You know, and so forth? So, unless compensation is what drives, you know, the decimation, because that, that's what, they're making it seem like their entire staff is being decimated by resignations because they all want to leave for higher pay. Is that a fact? Is it true? And so forth? And I don't see that issue addressed in the report that's submitted. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Okay, so, on the motion then to, to place Bill 384 in the third reading, there being no objections, so ordered. Bill 388, Senator Blas, an act to appropriate funds for the repair and maintenance of How Angels Football Field.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first move to accept Bill 388 as substituted by the committee.
On the motion then to accept Bill 388 as substituted by the committee, no objections, so ordered. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I further move to move Bill 388 to the third reading.
Okay, and you would like to discuss it, briefly discuss it?
Actually, Madam Speaker, as in, in the interest of time and recognizing there are a number of different other bills, unless any of my colleagues have any other questions that they may have.
So, on, on the motion then to play, to place Bill 388 as substituted by the committee on the third reading file, there being no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Bill number 358, an act relative to setting restrictions on the Guma Tranquilidad Housing Facility in order to preserve the independent living environment for Manomko, as I recognize Speaker Ben Panglinen. Bill 358.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the Bill 350-80C to be placed in the third reading file. And then I'd like to speak on the bill.
On the motion, to, on the motion first to accept, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to place 358-80C on the third reading file, and you would like to speak?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 358 is a bill that would set development restrictions on the Guma Tranquilidad property to a single-story setting. In other words, keep and preserve the tranquility that is Guma Tranquilidad. You know, Madam Speaker, the vision of Guma Tranquilidad is not a vision of one single person, as everybody says it is with regards to the vision of the late Governor Ricky Bodalio. It is the vision of the Chamorul culture, in terms of how we value our elderly, and what kind of peace and tranquility that we want to give them in their last days, that they are with us here on the island. And there was never any controversy that that's what we wanted as a people to give to our elderly. Never, 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 until economics began to put pressure on it, until people decided that that's not how they want to see it. And the reason why I say that, Madam Speaker, is because of, this bill is brought about, as you know, by the move by Gura, to put into place a five-story, multi-story living environment for our Manomko. Gura had never had this vision at all. They, it's a mistake to say that Gura did a housing study and found out that that's what they needed to do to provide housing for our elderly. Because you know why I can say that definitively? Because when Gura... Because when Gura issued the RFP for additional units at Guma Tranquilidad, they had no idea what they wanted. The board of directors did not say, "We want to add high-rise living at Guma Tranquilidad." It was the developer who submitted a proposal and sold that idea to the board of directors. The board of directors, when questioned during some of the public hearings, did not say, "We sat down as a board, did a housing study, and decided that the only way we can provide additional housing units for our Manomko Guam is to build a high-rise facility at Guma Tranquilidad." That's not what happened at all. What happened is they asked for a proposal and a developer came in and said, "You know what? I can give you additional housing at Guma Tranquilidad and I can still make money at doing it. I can give you a five-story unit and you have to guarantee me the rent and guarantee me certain number of housing vouchers and I can make money in it and you can have more housing units." And Gura got sold on this idea, neglecting to decide and decipher what was the desire of our Manomko and the tenants, the people that live there. They never did any kind of survey. And what we found is that that's what exactly what the residents of Guma Tranquilidad and the people that want to move into Tranquilidad want to go there for, for that type of environment that we're going to destroy and put in multi-story living and destroy the peace and the clarity. You know, Guma Tranquilidad is not a place for our Manomko. Guma Tranquilidad is a sense of place, a living environment that allows our elderly to exist peacefully and coexist with the lifestyle down there that is peaceful and tranquil, that allows them to open their door and see a next-door neighbor with a patch of grass and a garden, tending to that, not to open their door and find an elevator and a hallway. It is completely a different environment that they want to put down there. And you know what? When we first started looking at how much more additional homes we need, it turned out the waiting list was in the teens, 18, 19. Only when Gura was sold this idea by this developer and they needed to justify destroying that sense of place, that peace and tranquility for the last days of our Manomko here on this earth with us, only when they found out that that would be destroyed by the proposal did they begin moving and trying to find and they were going from senior center to senior center, trying to find who wants to move down there, please sign up so we can justify destroying that sense of place. It is sad. I am sad by this whole thing. Because we can still add more units at Guma Tranquilidad. We can find the money. You know, Gura says, "But we have no more land." The only way Gura has had land to develop housing is when the government of Guam has given it to them. Gura's never found housing on its own or land on its own, except when it's able to use federal dollars to buy private property for the development of these community facilities, such as the different karidat facilities that you've seen, the dementia home, where they've been able to use the federal funds to buy private property and build the homes. But in developing these elderly homes and developing homes for low and moderate income, the bulk of its inventory has come when the government has stepped forward, saw a need, and said, "Here's the property, find the financing and we will build it." And there have been suggestions of if we actually do, not if, but we need additional elderly housing and you have you want to maximize the property that you have, then let's find new property. And we find that, for example, Gura may have additional property up in Dedido where they need to destroy some of those homes that are only 20 years old, unfortunately, and they need to find and they can build multi-story living conditions there for our elderly. It's close to the hospital and the clinic, it's close to shopping, it allows them to achieve what they want that in fact, Manomkos want to live in a high-rise unit. But again, Madam Speaker, it's much like I look at this as symbols. It's a symbol of our community, it's a symbol of our culture, on the value that we place on our Manomko and the quality of life that we want to give them in their twilight years on this earth, when they're still right here with us. It is why I believe that this community wants to rebuild JFK in that lot. Because money is not the only thing, and you know, that symbols prosperity and good fortune for a community. It's the symbols that we put into place that showcase those values that we have. And the Japanese marvel at Guma Tranquilidad and that we're reserving that piece of property for our elderly. They think it's a great, great showcase of the heart of the Chamor culture, and it's what they want to see when they travel, this kind of inner commitment of a people to its own people. If we're going to treat our people like that, in that fashion, then they're going to want to come in a community because they know that we're going to treat them as visitors in that same manner, with the same respect, with the same hospitality, and with the same value. And that's why, for example, JFK, you know, it's an opportunity for us to showcase and symbolize in a facility up there how much we value our future leaders and our children, that we take a valuable piece of property and dedicate it to providing a state-of-the-art school for our children to learn in. And everybody that drives by that busy intersection every day can see it, and they see the commitment that this community makes to it. You know, we each culture has its symbols, the United States, the flag, the eagle, and so forth, which shows the value and, you know, the traditions of that culture. And on Guam, nothing speaks higher than the way we treat our Manomkos and so forth. And so this bill, I'm pleading with my colleagues to consider this bill favorably because it does present and preserve that value of what we value, of what we place on our Manomko and how we're going to treat them. And it still provides an opportunity for Gura to expand its housing inventory down there, and it still presents an opportunity for Gura to take these development proposals and put it at another place. And I've offered to work with Gura on fighting additional property to build this high-rise unit if they are absolutely convinced that that's where Manomkos want to live, in that type of environment. And for those that want to live in that type of environment, we will have that available to them. But for an environment that is more than a place, that is a sense of place, that is tranquil and peaceful, this is the place that we reserve. Not only now, and not only when we can afford it and so forth, but when it means really, when it really means something for us to ensure that it stays that way. When we make some sacrifices, and we will, when we make some sacrifices to preserve that, then it really talks about ourselves and our community and our sense of value and our sense of respect. And that's what this bill hopes to do with the help of every single member in this. And I plead with you, in this season, when we see what we are celebrating, then I hope that you can find it in your hearts to preserve this peace and tranquility for those residents at Guma Tranquilidad while still allowing additional units to be built there to ensure that others can also enjoy this peace and tranquility. And that those that want to have a more maybe modern existence in a high-rise unit, that we can build that somewhere else. And believe me, we can. And I thank you and thank every single one of you for listening to this plea that I am giving today on behalf of the residents of Guma Tranquilidad now and in the future. And really, on behalf of just the survival of our culture and its traditions as embodied in how we treat our Manomko in their last days on this earth. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. On the motion, Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I very much listened intently at the preceding speaker, and of course, I know that this is something that he is very passionate about, and we're all very much trying to accommodate as best we can those who are in their golden years, those who have served our community in one capacity or another, who find themselves looking for just that, tranquility, calm, peace. I don't know that a single family or a single level structure is what defines tranquility. I'm not sure. I know that many other communities in larger populated areas, and of course Guam's population growing, and as the gentleman had just articulated, that Gura is saying that they don't have the property. And if the alternative is not clear, and the options are not available at the time that this vote is taken, I don't know that I can support or not support this because I haven't made a decision on it either way yet. But my concern is that if they don't have other property and they don't have the option to build another facility for the growing Manomko and elderly within our community, what then is the alternative? We can work with them, of course. I understand that because I'm always the guy who tries to put my best foot forward and try to work with others and try to make solutions to problems every one of our community and different factions of our community go through. But what's what is the real alternative? What do we build and where? Is the tranquil environment at Guma Tranquilidad established by the virtue of number of floors in the building? We're not talking about a high-rise anyway. Five floors is hardly a high-rise. Five floors is a multi-floor facility, clearly. But we're talking about the accommodation, as far as I understand it, of a greater number of people who need these facilities. And of course, Tumon, it's a beautiful place. They have close access to the beach. They have coconut trees and other fauna in the vicinity, which is picturesque and a beautiful place to be. Is a two-story building or a five-story building going to evaporate that tranquility that exists? We all want to live, I think, at least maybe just using my own judgment, but you know, I looked at living in apartments and condos. We all know what the nature of your neighbors are, and sometimes you can't pick your neighbors, and the same can be said about family. But sometimes you have to be you have to be cognizant of the fact that there's limitations to space. And how do we then overcome those limitations while still trying to accommodate the need? Because the need is there. Is it implausible? Of course, I mean, personally, again, if I were in this situation, I'd say I just want a place where I can get along with people who have, you know, similar interests as mine, who have some sense of same mores and values that I have, and who have some maybe innovative ways to resolve some of my problems that I'm experiencing when I'm 70, 65, whatever number of years old that I am at that time. Is it the floors that establishes tranquility? Is it really that? I don't know. I mean, we can ask a number of people in different places, but we as a government have a responsibility as well. Are we putting a cap on the number of floors that this new facility or proposed new facility should have because we have another option somewhere else? Because if we have the floor space, then great. I remember PIC, which is of course down in Tumon, had the bungalows, remember, a few, many, many years ago? And they had these really nice bungalows, and you really don't find that too much now because, you know, property is at a premium. It's a very high cost for real estate. Can we as a community afford to give up land somewhere from our inventory to Gura so that they can in fact live in this quasi-single-family dwellings or, you know, single individual You know, my thing is, you know, I understand if I had the option to live on my own, if I was in close proximity to other people and I could have my own place, that would be great. But many of those places already are duplex or, you know, three, four units, housing units, individual housing units. Is it really that impactful? I mean, as a community, are we going to have a solution other than that one-story building? Because if there is no other solution, aside from that I'll work with you, I don't know that I can back it. Because I need to know that these people within our community, our Manomko, are not, you know, in the comment about, you know, are going to be able to profit. Every business is in it for profit, except for not-for-profit organizations. But if an entity, a business entity, is going to work with a federally funded facility through Gura and build a multi-story facility as opposed to a single one, and it accommodates more people, it maintains a tranquility, which the whole genesis of the idea was to place our Manomko down there, to make sure that they are given the opportunity to live in a in a place where they want to live, if that is the, in fact, the whole basis for putting our Manomko in the heart of Tumon, is to have them down there so they have access to the beach and they have access to the tranquil environment, which is Tumon, then great. But we need, I think, me, I think I need to know that there's some other alternative. Because our growing Manomko population, you know, their accommodations are going to need to be addressed. And knowing that we can work with them, I don't know if that's enough, especially for those people who are waiting for housing units. So I want to thank the mover of this bill and the opportunity to speak on it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. On the motion, are there any other speakers? So on the motion then to place Bill 358 in the third reading without any objections, so ordered. I just have an announcement to make that for those of you who are questioning about your bills not being on your desk, it's because the Xerox machine is down and the representative is currently working there. So we will proceed with the list that we have, the pile that you have on your desk. And if we skipped any of those, it's because either the members not in the hall to make the motion, I'm going to move on down, but you will not lose your place on the agenda. So we have now Bill number 251, an act to add a new chapter 81 to Title 21, Go Am Code Annotated Relative to the Deployment of Broadband and Telecommunications Infrastructure and Public Rights of Way as Substituted by the Committee. I call on Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to accept substitute Bill number 251.
On the motion then to accept without any objections, so ordered. Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the distance between Guam, the United States West Coast, makes Guam's internet prices extremely expensive. This portion of the internet service provider's cost is known as the back-end width. In the rest of the country, it's not uncommon to find broadband prices, seven megabits of bandwidth for less than $40 a month. On Guam, a similar speed services cost more than twice that much. There's not much we can do about the cost between here and the West Coast. There's a lot that we can do at the local cost. Bill number 251 simply allows Guam's internet service providers to deploy their infrastructure on government rights of way at cost, not free, but at cost. Access to broadband internet is, in the 21st century, as necessary as it can be. It's not a luxury. Madam Speaker, all internet service providers, including GTA, MCV, ITNE, GuamCell, and Wisp, have met with me and fully support Bill number 251, as you'll find in the committee report. GovGuam should not be profiting from the internet cells. Competition is keeping prices down, and that's, I think, benefits everyone, the government, individual businesses, everyone. Bill 251 will allow our internet service providers to upgrade their services and products while keeping costs. and products while keeping costs down. I want to thank the co-sponsors, Senator Roy Respecho and Senator Guthridge, who have worked with me in tandem with the telecommunications companies to try to make this infrastructure on the public rights away possible. Once we enact this into law, Madam Speaker, we are going to see, I think, a surge in the telecommunications industry here on Guam, we are going to see any, the vast improvement in the services that are offered to our, to our people, and we are going to see access to information, I think, likes of which we've never seen before. And the reason I, I bring that up, Madam Speaker, because I very much want our island to grow economically. We want our access to information to be as seamless, as fast, and efficient, and of course, as low-cost as possible. This bill will allow for that to happen. This bill will facilitate the access to public rights away at a reasonable fees, working with government agencies who have control over those facilities, and those, and those, in the proper course of time and do things in an expeditious fashion. If we can get access to information cheaper to more people, they can get access to the internet, children can get access to study material, we can see greater and greater communications, those things are the driving force behind, behind all of the greater economies in our world, in our globe. I want Guam to be there too, and I ask my colleagues to support this bill and, in fact, drive to telecommunications infrastructure on public rights away so that it drives the economy in, in one, in one section, it drives, hopefully, the access to information technology, and more so that it does so in a very economical way. So I ask my, my colleagues to please support this legislation and pass Bill 251. Thank you.
On the motion, are there any speakers? Madam Speaker Ben, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in, in theory, I don't disagree with what we want to do here, but, you know, in reality, what it does is it kind of like moves us further away from how other government acts and so forth. That in fact, what we're doing is we're giving up government assets here, you know, and telling ourselves that we're not going to act in a certain manner, that everybody criticizes us, we're not acting in, and that is maximizing the assets of this government. And so, it's just, that really, to me, is, is my, my major analysis or dilemma on this bill, is that, sure, we want to do all these things, but what do we get in return, you know? Do we, do we get these governments, these companies to reduce their rates because they're no longer paying, you know, an access fee or a reduced access fee? And, and without any kind of oversight, we don't know whether that's being reflected in the price that they charge. And, you know, we usually let competition dictate the price that these different and competing entities charge for these services, rather than letting government action, I mean, that's what they always tell us, stay out of the way, stay out of the marketplace. And now we're kind of injecting ourselves into the marketplace and so forth, and so, maybe, maybe I'm just concerned because we're going to have to figure out the budget next year. But, but that being said also, I just think that, you know, we have to maximize these government assets. We know for a fact that other communities actually require franchise fees for cable companies, just about every single community in the United States charges a franchise fee for cable companies. This bill prohibits us from doing that, and is that a revenue stream for this government that we want to take a look at in the future and so forth? And it works in other communities, we don't want to do it in ours, and therefore, we suffer in terms of the services that we're able to provide and the resources that we're able to give our government employees to do their jobs. So those kind of debates are all, for me, what I, what's occurring with looking at this bill, but I certainly recognize the author's intent and desire with regards to internet. Internet is almost like telephones, you know, twenty years ago. Telephones were kind of a luxury years ago, they're no longer, they're a basic necessity of, of a public service for health and safety reasons, and internet is, is very close to approaching that milestone in its implementation and deployment into the general community, that it in fact is almost is a basic utility for, for health and, and public, public safety reasons. So those are the debates we're seeing, and I certainly recognize the, the proposal being given here and so forth, but are we in fact sacrificing some government assets here and the economic exploitation of that asset for the benefit of, of the, of the government of Guam, and of course, ultimately, the people of Guam? Thank you.
On, on the motion, are there any others who would like to speak on it? So then, you want to close? Senator Tenorio to close.
Thank you. You know, I have the same debates, not just with my staff, of course, but those people that are in my office that were, of course, in support of this. My thing is, you know, we have a very small island, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the comments, and by the way, I failed to make the motion, I'll do so now, move to place Bill 251 and substitute it in third reading, and then I'll finish my comments. The, the genesis of this is...
You did, you did make that motion.
Okay, as I was just told, I wasn't, I didn't, so, I wanted to make sure I did. My concern here is that we want to make sure that, if I can do it as a senator, as a member, representative of the people of Guam, if we can make it easier for our people, for our government, for our business sector, for everyone on this island to have access to information, by not making it more expensive, but less expensive, by virtue of allowing for reasonable fees and associate, what you're defined in the bill, but don't drive up that cost, then we, in fact, increase our economic viability. We increase the prospects for business activity, we increase the chances of our kids getting better access to internet, we increase the flow of information between businesses, and of course, the facilitation of that, we all know, adds up to greater economic benefit. I want to grow this island, I want to grow our benefits, not just in the sense of the intangibles, but also the tangibles. I want to do it in such a way where this government doesn't make profit in areas where all of us are going to be suffering, because somebody's got to pay the bill. Now, we're going to charge reasonable fees, again, that are defined here, but let's not be burdensome. Let's make sure that we do it efficiently, and let's make sure we do it now. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. So on the motion to place Bill 251, as substituted by the committee on third reading without any objection, so ordered. On Bill 367, I call on the author, Senator Tenorio. 367, creating a tax incentive in the qualifying certificate program for the manufacture, distribution, and sale of alternative fuels and exempting such fuels from the liquid fuel tax.
Thank you. Let me make sure it wasn't substituted. Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place number 37, Bill number 367 LS in the third reading and just very briefly speak on it.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Guam is in an ideal location for the manufacture and sell of alternative fuels with regards to the production of those, those same alternative fuels. We have the climate, we have the rain, we have, this is one of the things on the cutting edge of alternative fuels. I mean, really, being able to do biofuels and extract vegetable sources other than corn kernels and soybeans is in fact fuel production. If we can get these businesses here to Guam, be able to open up and develop alternative fuels here on Guam, where it's an ideal environment within the United States territory, and do so by giving them qualifying certificate, we are going to, again, add to our economic base. We're going to be adding to the ability of Guam to be one of the players, not just in, to tourism, of course, as we've done for many years, and the military has been here for decades, but can we not look at other alternatives? Can we not look at a QC, giving them a tax break in areas where we are going to add or introduce a new industry to Guam? We really need to be as proactive as we can, I think, as a senator. I think one of my responsibilities is look at areas where we have not looked at before. And this is some of the criticisms by some of my colleagues who have raised before about, what are you doing differently? I mean, you're giving QC's to this, you're giving QC's to that, but what are we doing new? I mean, isn't that the whole idea about the QC's, to try to bring more business to Guam, try to bring more activity, more jobs? That's what this is about. So this will simply allow for the qualifying certificate program to include the manufacture, distribution, and sell of alternative fuels and exempting such fuels from the liquid fuel tax.
On the motion, are there any speakers? There being none, so those, I mean, oh, those, I'm so sorry. On the motion to place 36, 36, 367 in a third reading without any objections, so ordered. Oh, gosh, you guys are moving too fast. Bill number 298, I recognize Senator Espada. It's an active zone, the previously unzoned lot number 5327 in the municipality of Dedidu to light industrial zone. Senator Espada?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, very simply put, this is an act to zone a previously unzoned parcel. Without an existing zone designation, the Guam Land Use Commission is unable to act on the matter. Now, the authority established a comprehensive zoning plan for ancestral lands commissioned properties, of which this property is a, a, a member of, includes those released by the commission to original landowners, which lies exclusively in the provisional commission for the zoning of ancestral lands. Well, the commission has not been impaneled since the enactment of Public Law 28133, which leaves the landowner with no recourse other than to request the legislature to establish an appropriate zone. The, the zoning requested by the lot owner is for an M1 zone, basically a light industrial because of the types of businesses that he, he presently has and wishes to, to relocate to his lot on Route Three, and so as, as such, Madam Speaker, I, excuse me, I move to place this bill in the third reading file.
On the motion, are there any speakers? There being none, so therefore, on, are there any objections to placing Bill 298 EC in the third reading file?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Bill number 360, I recognize, as substituted by the committee by Senator Calvo. It's relative to allowing cosmetologist license in Japan to obtain a Guam cosmetology license to provide training at a recognized Guam school of cosmetology and to add a new section and so on. Senator Calvo, are you ready?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move again to place Bill number three, accept Bill number 360 EC. Let me just double check.
On the motion to accept Bill 360, as substituted by the committee, no objections, so ordered. Motion to place?
Yeah, motion to place on, to the third reading, and I, and I'd like to discuss Bill number 360, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill number 360 attempts to provide a new type of license through the Guam Board of Cosmetology that would be specific to a purpose and would have also certain positive benefits, not only for increasing the possible tourists' opportunities coming to Guam in terms of niches, but as well as strengthening the Guam Board of Cosmetology and their, and their funding sources, so that, to allow them to expand on their programs. It also would allow for the training of our local cosmetologists specific to certain programs as specified in this legislation. Madam Speaker, this bill is a collaboration, a collaboration from, from the private sector, specifically those in the hotel services industry, that we're looking towards expanding the wedding market on Guam, not only for those Japanese tourists that are coming here for the traditional Western-style wedding, but for those higher-end tourists that would be coming in for a traditional Japanese wedding, which entails a certain application of makeup as well as a certain hot hair styling for these traditional weddings. It is the belief of those proponents in the tourist services industry that the type of tourists that we would be attracting would be more of a higher-end customer base, that, again, not only will bring in a certain contingent to this island to spend money on our beautiful island community, but would also be a type of tourist, again, because of their desire for this traditional custom of wedding, would be more in that, again, that higher-end type of tourist. There have been bills that have been introduced in the past, and, and listening to some of my colleagues and their concerns, that may have been tied to this particular legislation, and maybe some confusion on that something such as this would be inapplicable because of a reciprocity, a reciprocity bill that had been introduced earlier. There are others that are saying that this may be damaging our local industry. This is not the fact, and that's why I asked my colleagues to read this bill in its entirety and look at how this has evolved. It was the collaboration, not only those in the tourist service industry, but also on the Guam Board of Cosmetology, that this particular legislation was drafted. There is no reciprocity here. It's specific to a special license, a specific license that, that is only for a certain type of practice, a certain type of practice that is restricted to one and a half years, and whereas the licensee would, would not be able to provide any other service but that. There are also provisions in this bill that for this special license, even though it is restricted, would be, and this is, again, based on some of the testimony that was provided, even those in our local cosmetology industry, it's, it's at a, at a fee structure that would appear to be higher than even what is charged for a normal license, which is far more encompassing. And of course, that was a provision put in there by the Board of Cosmetology in their desire to, to, to bring in revenue, so to assist in having the resources for the Board of Cosmetology. There is language in here also that, as a condition for this license, that licensee would have to perform seventy-two hours of training per year at a recognized Guam cosmetology school, such as the Guam Community College, or any other type of business premises that is recognized as a certified Guam cosmetology school. And this is in the hopes that for those, any license coming in here, that they will train, or licensee that, that, that does participate, come to Guam, that they will train our local workers, similar in a vein to, to, I guess if you could, to analogize it, similar to what we saw in the tourism services industry years ago when we brought in sushi chefs... services industry years ago, when we brought in sushi chefs, and all sushi chefs were of Japanese descent. As the years went by and the training did occur, it became less and less a situation where you had a sushi chef that was Japanese, but more in line of our local workers. They were trained, our local workers were trained, and with that, there was no need or desire to bring in chefs from Japan, because number one, it was too expensive, and number two, it was in the best interest to hire someone locally. So, Madam Speaker, I'm asking for the support of my colleagues. I believe this is a win-win situation, not only for the tourism service industry, but our local community. We are, and we all recognize that, we are having, experiencing double-digit decreases in tourism into this island. We are trying to look at different new markets that we could tap into. We believe that with the passage of this legislation, we can tap into a special market, and that of the higher-end Japanese tourists that is looking at a traditional wedding. We will also have additional revenue sources to the Board of Cosmetology in the form of license fees, specific to this type of traditional practice, and it's time limited as well to one and a half years. And also, it has a mechanism there now for training our local workers, because there are provisions in here that set that there must be, again, not less than seventy-two hours of training per year for these licensees. So Madam Speaker, I believe it's a win-win-win situation for our community, and I'm asking for the support of the members of this body. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to also, again, move to place into the third reading.
So on the motion to place 360 and substitute in the third reading file, no objections, Senator Shimizu, he was in here a moment ago. It's going Bill 359, an act to add a new section 847 to chapter 8 of Title 1 of the Guam Code Annotated, to rename the Maritza Library to be the Rosa Aguiar Rages Memorial Library. I know he's been waiting for this. Okay, so as soon as he comes in, we'll go on to the, we'll proceed on, and then we'll go right back to that bill then. We have Bill 260. Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, in the interest of time, move to place Bill number 260 EC as amended, an act to add a new article...
To accept as amended.
Are we substituted here?
260 as amended by the author. That's what I have. Unless you have another one.
Give me a second. Oh, motion then to accept Bill number 260 EC as amended by the author.
On the motion to accept 260 as amended by the author, no objections, so ordered. Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't need to tell you about the, how heinous it is to use a minor in a drug operation, and that this bill would institute severe penalties for the inclusion or the use of minors in any aspect of any drug operation, and for that reason, I move to place Bill number 260 EC as amended in the third reading.
On the motion to place Bill 260 as amended by the author in third reading, there being objections, so ordered. Vice Speaker Shimizu, on Bill 359.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to put Bill 359, it's an act to rename the Maritza Library to be the Rosa Aguiar Rages Memorial Library, to be put in third reading file for voting today.
And would you like to briefly?
No, we just voted on it.
Thank you. So on the motion then to place 359, then, on third reading, without any objections, Relative to the Department of Land Management Building Construction Fund.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 392 into third reading.
Okay, would you like to briefly discuss it?
Just very minor, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, this Bill 392 basically helps to solidify and to clarify the intent of the original bill or the original law that was passed by this legislature earlier in our term, relative to the construction fund for the construction of the Department of Land Management building that was set aside, that was awarded to the government of Guam by FEMA.
On the motion, are there any speakers? Okay, Speaker Ben Panglinen, you're recognized.
I just have a question, Madam Speaker. The lot number that is designated, the lot that is designated for construction is, I wanted to ask the author, whose title is that lot vested in?
Would the author yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Speakers. Quite honestly, I've got to do some research on that. Give me a little bit of time to look at.
Okay, so what, can, you want to recess while you get the information? I mean, it's only, it's five minutes to five anyway, do you want to recess, get the information, then, till we come back tomorrow?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that, so Senator Respecho, then, you're recognized, and for a motion to recess?
What time is you here?
Two thirty.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Okay, we'll be recessed until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.